Good evening. This meeting of the Romulus Board of Education is called to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Secretary, could I please have role?
Ms. Bowles?
Here.
Ms. Kraut?
Here.
Ms. Fundenberg?
Here.
Ms. Buckley?
Here.
Ms. Beard?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Present.
Mr. Thede?
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into our full agenda, ladies and gentlemen of the board, item 10, adjournment on the statutory meeting, is, needs, it needs to be eliminated. We will go directly into our 6:15 meeting. If there's a need to recess, to give us till 6:15, we'll do so. With that, the next item on the agenda is the organization of the board. Nominations for the office of President, Vice President, and Secretary and Treasurer are in order, starting with President. Are there nominations for President?
I nominate Teresa Beard.
Hi. I don't want to be President.
She declines the nomination.
Mr. President, I nominate Ron McLaughlin for President.
Yeah, I think we do need support.
Yes.
Yeah.
You support. Are there further nominations for President? Are there further?
I nominate John Thede for President.
You know, I, with my schedule, there's no way I can take the President. I appreciate that, but there is no way with my schedule.
So you're declining the nomination?
I have to decline that, yes.
I nominate Danielle Fundenberg.
Uh-uh. No. Sharon Buckley?
No, thank you.
Hear that train whistle?
I nominate Ms. Kraut. President.
I've been, I've been. I've been through every member.
Now, normally, if you then become, you win the election and you leave in November, does the Vice President just automatically move up?
That's correct.
Unless we vote.
Unless the board votes otherwise.
Yeah.
But that is the policy that is in place, yes. Okay, going back, are there any further nominations? The nomination was made by Ms. Buckley, supported by Mrs. Fundenberg, to nominate Mr. McLaughlin as President. Hearing no other nominations, by acclamation, Mr. McLaughlin is the Chair. Thank you, board members. Nominations are now open for Vice President.
I nominate Teresa Beard.
I'll support that.
Are there any more nominations for Vice President? Hearing none, the Chair recognizes that Mrs. Beard is Vice President by acclamation. Congratulations, Mrs. Beard.
Thank you.
With that, nominations are now open for Treasurer, I'm sorry, for Secretary.
I'd like to nominate Danielle Fundenberg for Secretary.
I support that.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the Chair declares Mrs. Fundenberg is the Secretary by acclamation. With that, nominations are open for Treasurer.
I would like to nominate Mr. John Thede for Treasurer.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Buckley and supported by Mrs. Fundenberg, was it?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations for Treasurer? Hearing none, the Chair recognizes that Mr. Thede is the Treasurer by acclamation. Congratulations and thank you. With that, we will now move into designation of depositories. What is the board's pleasure?
I move that the Board of Education name Comerica to continue as depositories and that the President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, Director of Business and Operations, and Superintendent of Schools have the authority to sign authorizing documents requiring two of the six actual signatures or facsimiles' signatures.
Support.
It's been moved by Mrs. Kraut, supported by Ms. Fundenberg. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven and zero. Next item on the agenda is the schedule of meetings. Is the board's pleasure?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education of the Romulus Community School District schedule their meetings on the second and fourth Monday of each month as presented in keeping with the school calendar at 6:00 PM for the 2013-2014 school year.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Buckley, supported by Mrs. Beard. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven and zero. Next item on the agenda is the naming of the attorneys. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education employ the firm of Keller, Toma, PC, and the Thrun Firm to act as attorneys for the Board of Education for the 2013-2014 school year at an hourly rate of $165 to $210 and the total annual amount not to exceed $35,000.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Fundenberg, supported by Mrs. Buckley.
Discussion.
Yes, Mrs. Kraut?
Um, I think this is the same rate and the same as last year's, and I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes.
I just want to find out as well, um, on here, I noticed it said amended. Can you just tell me a little bit why it says amended at the top? It says amended.
I think it's just a typographical. Is that all it is, is a typographical here?
So these are the previous attorneys there?
Yes, oh, yes.
Okay. And I believe it was quoted, we did go out for bids the prior years, isn't that right, or the year before?
Two years ago, yes.
Right.
Yes. And, uh, Ms. Bowles, just as you know, the Thrun Law Firm, they basically handle most of our, um, la, uh, labor, for the most part.
Dayday loans, things of that nature.
The loans, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, I'm sorry, that's right, and then Gary King is from, uh, Keller Toma, he does the labor and, uh, policy.
Thrun also handles any bond refunding.
Yeah, financial stuff.
Do we have a figure for what we spent last year, approximate?
On legal?
Upright.
Total, around $45,000? It was $10,000 more than the budget, but if you remember, I came to the board at that time, you were aware of that.
Yeah, because of the, the prior superintendents' issues.
What was the name again of the, is it Gary Toma?
Gary King is from the Keller Toma law firm.
Oh, okay.
Any further questions? Hearing none, the motion is on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven and zero. Next item on the agenda is the naming of the auditor. What is the board's pleasure?
I move that the Board of Education employ the firm of Raymond and Robson to act as auditors for the Board of Education for the 2013-14 school year, not to exceed $22,400. Includes $1,900 for possible additional federal grant audit.
Support.
It's been moved by Mrs. Beard, supported by Ms. Buckley. Any questions?
I had a question. Go ahead, I'll let you go first. I was just, Sherry, you've worked with them now, they, we went out to bid and we got them, and did they work well this past year?
Yes, so this is our, we're going into our third year.
The last year of the contract.
So we completed two years of audit services with this firm, and we're still under the bid that they quoted a few years ago. Yes, I'm satisfied with their, I'm satisfied with their services.
My question was just answered a few minutes ago.
Okay.
Any further questions? Hearing none, the motion is on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven and zero. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of previous policies. What is the board's pleasure?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the existing policies of the Romulus Community Schools.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Fundenberg, supported by Ms. Buckley.
Question, I have a question on that.
Ms. Bowles?
Um, I wanted to find out, in regards to the, the re-adoption of the policies, we're gonna actually come together anyway and do some revising over it, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm just trying to find out, if we're gonna revise some of the policies anyway, then what would be the point of us adopting it tonight? Why couldn't we just postpone it?
Because we have to have policies to operate.
Okay, but we have the policies we have now anyway, they're not, they're gonna be the same policies either way, go, right? So what's the point of us going through?
They are renewed every July 1st.
Every year, yeah. Okay, well, I was looking in this Roberts Rules of Order Newly Revised, and it was saying that, you know, you can go ahead and postpone some items that are normally part of the annual meeting session. Um, I was reading and it was saying here, it says, "And such an item of business has actually been taken up as required during the session of the annual meeting. It may be also postponed beyond the session in accordance with the regular rules for the motion to postpone." So then I looked up what it said in regards to that, um, and when I looked that up on page 185, and I don't know if you all have one of these books, Roberts Rules of Order Newly Revised version, but, um, it's very good, good book for us to definitely take into account. It says, "If the matter has actually been taken up during the specified session as required, it is also may be postponed beyond the session in accordance with the regular rules for the motion to be postponed. It is usually unwise to do so, however, unless completed and during the session provides impossible or impractical." So I, I felt like personally, like I said, we've been going by the rules anyway. It's just an extra step that we're gonna have to take, 'cause you're gonna have to bring it back to the board. Help me out, am I correcting this? We're gonna have to bring it back to the board, then we're gonna, after we do the revisions over, and then we're gonna have to approve those anyway. So I felt like, what's the point of taking that extra step when we can do it all at one time?
We're only gonna approve the revised, right?
Yeah, we're only gonna be making specific revisions.
Approve the revised ones, though.
Okay, so, so, 'cause I, from my understanding, when we had the discussion before, um, Ms. Fundenberg, you were saying it was a possibility that we can go through the, the policies, all of the policies, if we needed to, and there was never a decision on whether we were gonna do that or not. So that was my reasoning why even bringing this up. Is that something we're gonna do, or is that, are we already gonna look at certain parts of it? Board, as a whole?
Actually, actually, we said both. The administration is gonna bring us specific policies that they need addressed, and that will probably happen sooner than later. And then we decided that as a board, for out, throughout the next year, we will go through section by section, possibly one section a month, you know, the 1,000 series, the 2,000 series, and go through them, page by page. But that's not gonna be an instant process by any, by any stretch.
Okay, I didn't know, I didn't know if you had something set aside for that or not.
No.
But now that I know that, that's fine. I just wanted to bring that up, 'cause I didn't really see the point in it, that's all.
And I would like to note that there are times that we have to make revisions based on the federal or state laws changing.
Absolutely.
So, um, it's always a work in progress that we have to, mandated to make changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, the motion is on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven and zero. We are just before the 6:15 mark. We will stand in recess until 6:15. Good evening, we're back in session.
Feel good about it.
The next item on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is the approval of the agenda for the rest of the meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Discussion.
It's been moved by Mrs. Buckley, supported by Mrs. Kraut. Discussion, Mrs. Kraut?
Actually, it was me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She has discussion.
I'm sorry. Supported by Ms. Fundenberg. Ms. Kraut, go ahead.
Do we need to specify that, um, we would vote the memberships separate?
I had already made note of that, but, you know, I was, I was just gonna say a board member had, had mentioned that, and they are worded so that they can each be voted on separately, based on the board's pleasure.
All right.
Any other discussion on the agenda? Chair will entertain a motion, I'm sorry. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the MASB membership. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move that the, excuse me, the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent to join the Michigan Association of School Boards for the 2013-2014 school year at a cost of forty-nine, forty-nine, $4,983.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Buckley, supported by Ms. Beard. Questions?
Discussion. Um, is this the basic cost?
Yes.
And can we, like, let everyone know what it covers? I mean, it's almost $5,000, we're deficit budget, and I think that anything that is not a necessity should, should be looked at.
Actually, um, Mr. President, um, if we could have maybe a deep, a deep, a brief description of all of the memberships as, as we do the recommendate, read the motions.
Yeah, absolutely.
So then that way, they know what we're okaying.
We can do that, and I can tackle the MASB one if, if board members would like. Uh, as we all know, MASB provides a, a vast amount of resource and training information for board members, and for superintendents for that matter, and, um, they are also, we are, uh, when we set up our policy manual, we signed up through MASB. They are the ones that, that helped codify that, and they're keeping us abreast. They notify us when a policy becomes outdated because of state and federal statute changes. We know as a benefit of our membership with MASB, we had a, a reduced rate for a superintendent search that we just conducted.
Legislative advocacy?
Yeah, obviously legislative advocacy. We've enjoyed three years, my time is coming to an end because of their bylaws, I can only serve three years, but we've had a local member on their government relations board as well, keeping us apprised of, of things that are going on there. Anybody have anything they wanna add to that? I mean, there is, there is a cover letter here that kinda explains what they do, but I see your point, Mrs. Kraut, not everybody has this letter, so. Any further questions on the MASB membership? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven and zero. Next item on the agenda is the Metro Bureau. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent and join the Metropolitan Detroit Bureau of School Studies for the 2013-2014 school year at a cost of $1,777.58.
Support.
It's been moved by Mrs. Fundenberg, supported by Ms. Buckley.
I have a question in regards to this.
Ms. Bowles?
Okay. I wanted to find out, um, um, has anybody taken initiative to look into it, to see if there's a conflict of interest with this particular item?
Conflict with?
With the interest, because there's a previous employer, employee of Romulus that is now working for that company, um, that was actually part of, like I said, Romulus' administration, um, and I wanted to find out, you know, what was your, your thought on that in regards to finding out if that's something that the board wants to go forward to in working with this particular company, because they are now a part of them. They are affiliated with them, and at one time, they were affiliated with us as well too. And, um, I personally, uh, was not a fan of their professional ethics. So I was just wondering how the other board members may have felt about that.
I guess I would just be concerned with, what are we gonna get for almost $2,000? What did they provide last year?
Good question.
You wanna handle that one?
It's board's pleasure, absolutely. Um, I use Metro Bureau, um, probably on a weekly basis, I have since I became in, since I entered into this position for human resources. One of the primary things that we use it for is access to local and statewide data. They do a lot of data-wide, um, collections, so that data is used in decision-making, it's also used in negotiations. One of the other things that we use Metro Bureau for is their informational seminars and webinars. There's lots of changes that are going on legislatively in our industry, and it's a very cost-effective way for us to receive those updates. They're updating, they're, they're moving a lot more to their webinars, which is something that I'm attracted to, because it keeps me in the district, I don't have to travel to Lansing to gain that information and still be part of that community. The third thing I use Metro Bureau for quite a bit, which is where I think we get our, our bang for our buck, is they provide, um, legal services to us. Not in the sense that Keller Toma and Thrun offer to us, but more of that, I gotta pick up the phone, I gotta ask somebody a consult on this, what do you think of this? They can steer me in the direction, do I need to contact my legal counsel or not, at $165 an hour? Or, no, you know, you're fine on this, you're, you're going in the right direction, keep going. So those are the things that I use Metro Bureau for, on behalf of the school district.
And, Ms. Bowles, just, just for your, um, knowledge, last year was very much the same question, and Metro Bureau was deemed to be absolutely a, a value for the district. But I wanted to share with you that I too shared the concern about, we'll use the words "professional ethics" with this specific executive director, but what I think we need to do is we need to remove that from the equation and look at what that organization can provide to our district. So.
I, I understand what you're saying, but my, I'm just, I'm the type of person where, if you've had previous experience and it's burnt you once, why would you turn around and let it burn you again? Especially when this is somebody that was in an administration position, and now they're still in an administration position just on the opposite side of the fence. And I'm looking, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Peck, but I've looked at some of these other companies that we're gonna be going over as well, and quite frankly to tell you, some of the stuff kinda overlap. And when I mean overlap, I mean, it just seems like some of the services that was provided, that you're telling me is provided through this particular company, also may be provided in some of the other companies as well too. Um, and I was just gonna bring that up later on when we went through some of that information, and I, I printed off some of the sheets, because it was so much, I couldn't possibly print out everything, but just a little bit of information that I found out on one of them was in regards to the state and federal policies. You know, keeping us up on, uh, on, you know, what's going on with that. I found, you know, one of the companies that we do do that. And then, um, another one was in, uh, the whole ideal of us having to say so, um, and I'm gonna use what they said here, just to make sure I say it correctly. Therefore, permitting middle cities direct input into state-level decision-making. So I'm looking at that, so we get a chance to still have a say on that behalf. And, you know, they have also the fund, uh, something in regards to, it says, "Fund focuses on installing safe practices, practices in schools, prompting effective treatment of workplace injuries." So that's, they're telling you information on that too, in regards to, you know, some of our employee, employees that we have, to make sure that we up on our safe practices so that we don't run into any kinda, uh, sue lawsuits or anything like that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, like I said, I just, I brought a couple of the sheets here that I printed off of the internet as I was going through, play, I like to say playing with the website personally. That's my way of learning. I go through it, I have to, I'm a, I'm a doer. So I have to research the website to find what I'm looking for. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well too, that that's not, in other words, when I'm saying, there's a possibility that there's other options that we can go.
I guess my, I got a question. Is there, does, does any of these others provide the same, I know we talked about this before, 'cause we go, usually every year, we would talk about this in depth, so, is this something that, um, one of the others say, like, middle cities, or maybe even MASB could provide us with some of the information that they provide or not?
You know, it's, it's just a matter of, you know, what the board's pleasure is.
The.
I have access, easy access to this information. They serve Oakland, Macomb, and Wayne County.
The big hang-up last year, I didn't mean to step on you, Ms. Peck, the big hang-up last year was between Metro Bureau and Middle Cities.
Middle Cities, yeah. That's what they did, we didn't do middle cities.
What has been explained to me is, yes, there can be some overlap in services. And the way I'm wrapping my head around it is like, it's like comparing Time Magazine to People Magazine. Yeah, they kinda cover the same thing, but they have their niche, their specialties in, and that's what we're going for, is the specialties. The Metro Bureau would be data collection and analysis, and Middle Cities would be absolute advocacy. That, that's the big difference. Bless you.
I have one question too.
Yes.
One of my concerns, how much interaction will we have with the executive director?
I can answer that. I haven't had any conversations with him, and I, like I said, I contact, I'm in contact with Metro Bureau once, um, at least every two weeks, and oftentimes weekly. Most of the services that I receive from Metro Bureau are through the vendors that Metro Bureau uses their collective bargaining, their, their, their power of getting those people together.
What about influence? We don't know yet? Okay.
I'm not, I guess I'm not really clear on what the question is. Is, you mean, is the Metro Bureau influencing the decisions that we make?
No, no, I'm talking about the individual that we're talking about. I mean, what would his influence be, or if we need, uh, information, how's he gonna dictate from the way he left here?
Yeah, and I.
To, how is he really gonna help?
Yeah, I haven't had any, any, like I said, I haven't had any direct contact.
Okay.
Because all the data, it's, you know, they have data systems that we can access, you know, electronically, and then they have different groups of individuals that I work directly with. Um, I work with policy, you know, the policy group I work with. So, again, I don't, I don't have any direct contact with the, the previous superintendent.
Is there a possibility, maybe you can do some research in that superintendent? Is there a possibility, if that's what the board's pleasure is, that you could see to it that the, uh, Human Resource, uh, Director would do some, uh, a little bit of research on it before we're able to make a decision on it because of the circumstances? Is that possible?
What additional information would you be interested in?
In regards to what John Thede was asking?
I don't know that that's an answer that can be quantified. I mean, I, I see, I see what you're saying, John, but I, I don't know how you quantify that answer.
How can you research it, I know.
You know, I, I mean, I won't mention the guy's name, but I suspect he's doing very little more than collecting a paycheck, kinda what his experience here was.
Yeah, I was just curious how much, if Rebecca has any interaction with him when you call, or anybody?
I could add, um, recently, in terms of the business office and, and business operations, there are things that the Metro Bureau provides in terms of being able to, um, bid on gas contracts. We've not had that with Metro Bureau, and I think that is due to the fact of the previous employees being, um, engaged in getting information out to districts more than it ever has been before. And that is something I'm looking at. If they can provide a, a better bid on gas prices, natural gas prices, that's something that I would bring forward to the district. So there are those kinds of services as well. And that's just one niche that we really haven't had in the past with this organization that I will look at in the future.
How many years have we used Metro?
I, it's, they've been in this, this list since I've been here, and it's been over seven years.
I know, I make a change.
This, this list used to be, what, at least two pages long?
When this was being considered by the board of, of not renewing, I went ahead and looked for other sources that I could find the information that I needed in order to, to prepare for the district, and there wasn't any other source. There's lots of crossover information, um, but there isn't a, a direct source that, that I would have, be able to put my hands on without an additional cost to the district.
Well, the fact that they can guide you whether or not you, this is an issue you need attorney's expertise or not, to me, that's a big value.
Yeah, if it saves us $165 to $210 that we can get the information just from a membership as opposed to having to pay somebody to work out what, to draft a letter for $165.
as opposed to having to pay somebody to work out what, to draft a letter for a hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Any further questions on Metro Bureau? Hearing none, the motion is on the floor, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two.
Was it two or three?
Five.
I heard two noes. Do you need a roll call?
No, we're good.
No.
Get to my jury.
Well, I wasn't sure if John just said his late or.
I know.
Oh. I thought I said about the same time.
Next item on the agenda is the Middle Cities Association, what is the board's pleasure?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of superintendent and join the Middle Cities Association for the 2013-2014 school year at a cost of seven thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. Support.
Been moved by Ms. Buckley, supported by Ms. Funderberg, any questions?
Discussion.
Yes, Mrs. Kraut.
Did we not renew that last year?
That's correct.
And we did survive, and we are a deficit budget, and we need to cut anything and everything that we can. And that's how I'm looking at this issue.
I also have a question, too, in regards to it.
Ms. Bowles?
As I went on the website for this one, I was looking at it, and I saw that as you go on it and you go to the section where it allows you to see the member districts on the website, once you click on that and you click on Ramus Community Schools, it automatically takes you like to Wayne RISA. So I, I'm, you know, I'm trying to find out, I know that we are affiliated with Wayne RISA already. I'm trying to find out what's the difference between what Wayne RISA is doing in regards, or what is the difference between the two? Once again, is this just a little bit overlapping again that we're doing, or?
Well, RISA is the intermediate agency that services the county, where Middle Cities covers districts across the state. And what they've done, those districts that are a part of Middle Cities, are those who have come together for representation, as Mr. McGlaughlin said, really advocates, especially at the state level for all of these different things that we've got going on right now. It very well might be that, at this point, this is a membership that, you know, we might not, you know, have. However, I don't ever want to have anyone feel that it's not an important membership because especially when you have districts that are smaller like we are, they're, they're an advocate for us instead of hiring a lobbyist. They're the ones who are there and who can speak on our behalf and do many of those kinds of things that we just can't afford to do. And because they do represent such a variety in size of school districts, they can go after multiple needs. So it's, it's a valuable, membership, very valuable. But, you know, again, it is the pleasure of the board.
I understand what you're saying, the superintendent, but I think for me, my question is more on the fact of, I'm thinking about what Mr. McGlaughlin said a few minutes ago about the two different magazines. And that's good when you can afford both magazines. But as Ms. Kraut said a few minutes ago, we are in a situation where we're, we're in debt. So, you know, it's about looking at what's, what it is that we need, we can't do without right now, is, is where I'm at. You know, and, and until I can get some more.
Well, that's why I said it was the pleasure of the board, you know.
Until I can get some more information that kind of can tell me a little bit more about how it directly fits our needs, especially in regards to, like I said, with this one and some of the other ones that are listed by them being so much of an overlapping, I just think we just need to do some more research and find out what, which one best fits our needs for the most part right now because of our circumstances.
Yeah, I, I know some of these organizations are valued to us and our employees, but like Ms. Kraut said, we went out without it last year, and we, and we're, and we're fine now. I mean, I gave up chips last year and I'm still fine right now. And I can't understand if we didn't do it last year, I don't see no reason to have it this year.
What, are there any instances where last year we could have utilized their services? Or, I mean, I guess my thing is, did we miss them?
Well, I tell you, what they did, they really kind of carried us along a little bit.
Okay.
You know, and kind of just gave us some support anyway. So, you know, we, they kind of grandfathered us along for a little while. And, you know, we didn't have like the full benefits from all of the membership, but, you know, like, you know, calling for some advice, being included in some, some advocacy, you know, situations. So, you know, with the next year out, we probably won't be able to kind of pick up the phone quite in the same fashion.
Okay.
I'll just say that, you know, from my perspective of the memberships, that one to me is expendable. If, if that's something that is the wishes of the board, I think that membership is something that, you know, although it would be nice to have, you know, it'd be nice to have a lot of things, it'd be nice to have ice cream on Tuesdays, you know, so. I'm sorry? Yeah. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails, zero to seven. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Michigan High School Athletic Association, what is the board's pleasure?
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent and join Michigan High School Athletic Association for the 2013-2014 school year at no cost to the district. Support.
Been moved by Mrs. Kraut, supported by Ms. Funderberg, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven and zero. Next item on the agenda is the Michigan Institute for Educational Management, what is the board's pleasure?
Move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent and join the Michigan Institute for Educational Management for the 2013-2014 school year at a cost of three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Funderberg, supported by Ms. Buckley, did I hear someone say discussion?
How much do we use this group for the workshops and the conferences? Because I, all the time? Because I'm just curious that it's seven months into the year and they still have our old superintendent listed as. And I'm thinking, and if they were on the ball and we're sending people to those classes, would we have to have a registration form or at least who runs the district, wouldn't they know that?
Interestingly enough, though, on the second, on the back page.
I see the back that, of anything that changed, but you would think seven months they would know that we changed.
I can.
And it's educational management, which is funny.
Yeah, it's funny because I brought the same question up, but the.
I couldn't understand, that probably comes from a different department, but I was just curious.
They, they're an umbrella organization that Michigan School Business Officials, Michigan Association of School Administrators, Michigan Association of School Boards, they'll all have different in-service that'll go through them. And if you're an MIEM member, you get a different rate. So we more than save.
So we're using it quite a bit.
Any further questions?
And we'll see about getting that information updated.
How much of a discount do we get? Does, do anybody know?
It fluctuates based on the.
Because I would like to find out, does it equal out to three hundred, and how much are we paying for this?
Three hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Are we sure?
I could give you a percent, yes, with certainty.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven and zero. Next item on the agenda is the Advanced Ed certification, what is the board's pleasure?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent and join Advanced Ed for the 2013-2014 school year at a cost of four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Support.
It's been moved by Mrs. Funderberg, supported by Mrs. Beard. I heard a question, but I just want to clarify and then I'll get to the questions. This is not necessarily a membership for professional services. This, this organization is the organization that provides the professional accreditation for all of our schools. So this isn't as optional as we would like to think it is. Ms. Bowles, did you have a question?
Uh, yes, I wanted to find out, has anybody looked into what is the criteria, criteria that Ramus must meet to ensure accreditation through them? I did see some, some links on there, but I wasn't able to open it. So I'm asking the question because I want to find out, is, I know what accreditation is. I'm trying to find out, is this a specific where they will place some kind of, some sort of a seal? Like on our, will be able to place that on our webpage? Or exactly what is the, how do they decide what schools are accredited through that particular organization? I'm asking that question because I want to find out, I know for a fact that through Wayne County, we also are ranked as well, meaning the school district is ranked. So I'm wanting to find out how, which one is the most influential. And the reason why I'm trying to find that out is because I want to make sure that we don't have a stamp that says, okay, we're accredited and, you know, here we are, but yet Wayne County has got us ranked at a lower, you know, a low status, standards. Because it contradicts and it will confuse the citizens. They're like, wait a minute, you got this stamp that say one, and I'm calling it a stamp, which I understand it may not necessarily be called a stamp.
I'm with you.
But I want to make sure I break this down for basics so that people understand where I'm coming from. You got a stamp that says, okay, great, your school is wonderful, but yet when the citizens go to do research on Ramus Community Schools of the ranking, where we rank in regards to Wayne County, we're not ranked at a specific rate that corresponds with that amount of that stamp. And so the reason why I'm asking that, because I know also, and I'm, I'm just telling you a little bit of information, hopefully, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to say Ramus is a bad or anything like that, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just putting the facts out there. When you go to, let's say the high school kids get ready to graduate, they get ready to go to a college. They're going to look at your SATs, they're going to look at your ACTs, they're going to look at your, your grade point average, they're going to look at your curriculum activities, that sort, to kind of figure out the kind of student you are and if that's a student that they would actually want at their, at their college. Now, if you got a stamp that say one thing, but your kid is making a zero-point-five average, that stamp is not what is going to be used to help them get into the school. So I'm just making sure everybody understands why I'm concerned about this stamp and how it, and what it represents, along with the amount of money that we spending for the stamp to find out if this stamp is even valuable to us.
The school district went through a very extensive process in order to get their accreditation. And they got the, they got it before I arrived. But the process includes going through many aspects of the school district, you know, not only the academics, but looking at, you know, professional development, teachers, accreditations. It, a very, a very extensive process. A team came out, and if, if it was the way that they are normally run, the team came out and spent some time and went through all of the buildings, went through all of the information, and we just had to send in, they did some recommendations. And we had to send in a follow-up, you know, based upon what some of their recommendations were.
Yeah, that was two years ago, and the board actually was audited. And the board members had to sit in committees with the accreditation team. And we, they looked at areas of curriculum, staffing, staff certification, pupil teacher ratios.
School improvement plan and all of it.
Yeah, the whole.
It's very.
It's like a two-week process of them actually coming in and conducting interviews with the different schools. Each individual school, they talk to parent groups, they talk to teacher groups, they talk to administrators, they talk, they talk to the board members as well. And so it, it's a long deliberated process, it, you know, it's very purposeful, the, the process that they go through in order to, to get the accreditation.
Okay. I think what she's asking is what is the value? How does this help our students? Is this going to help them get into their college? Is this going to help them, how is this going to, we're paying this money for accreditation, how does this help them?
School, accepting schools, colleges, and universities, they do look and see if the schools that they came from were accredited. And Advanced Ed, you know, North Central accreditation used to be, now they've combined. But, yeah, they do look and see, was it North Central accredited or Advanced Ed accredited? Yeah, they absolutely do.
Well, do you.
So it does matter.
Can we check with our local, like Eastern and U of I to see if this is going to make a difference if we don't pay for the dues?
I know Michigan State wanted to know if.
Yeah, it does make a difference. That's what's. It does make a difference.
It's not just those two schools.
They want to know if the school is accredited. Colleges want to know if you're coming from an accredited school.
Okay, well, we, can you answer me this? Because I looked on there, and like I said, I tried to pull up the document. I wasn't able to pull on the document, I did print the page at least, to show you that it is a document listed there that says, review the Advanced Ed accreditation standards for schools, review the Advanced Ed school assurances, view the Advanced Ed policies and procedures. I wasn't able to pull this up, is there any way that we can hold off on voting on this or table it? Or, until we can pull up that information so I can see the actual document itself? Because you're saying it was done two years ago, and I wasn't here two years ago. And I would like to see specifically what it is that they're looking at, as well as myself do some more research in looking into calling some colleges around here and finding out, is that specified? Because I know when I went to school, it wasn't specified like that. So, you know, I would like to have that opportunity to look into that for the kids' sake.
And I too would like to know what surrounding school districts, do, does Huron pay this dues? Does Bellevue pay these dues? Does Taylor pay these dues? Are they part of, are our neighboring schools, are they part of this?
Well, if you, if you recall back when we went with the Advanced Ed over, that's when they were switching from North Central, the state required that districts have some form of accreditation. And that was where some of the best practices monies came from, and that's where the, the core curriculum and the core requirements were from. We will still be required to have some form of accreditation. That requirement has not gone away. Who we are accredited by becomes the debatable issue.
So Wayne RISA, no one else can like.
They don't provide, they tried doing, they actually, the state of Michigan, because this is a federal requirement, if I'm not mistaken, because the state tried doing their own certification or accreditation program, and it, it was not successful. That's where they relapsed back to the Advanced Ed.
But I'm so curious how, what other neighboring schools are doing for the accreditation?
Um, I have a suggestion. According to the invoice, according to our invoice on here, this is not due till seven-thirty-one of thirteen, which gives us another meeting this month. Can we delay it till then, while we can get the information for some colleagues up here?
Let's, if it's okay with the maker and the second of the motion, can we postpone? I don't want to table it because if we table it, it'll die.
We don't need an answer, obviously, tonight.
Can we, can we? Yes.
And then, I guess for me, the concern would be, yes, if colleges are looking at it, your high schools have to be accredited. But do you really, the accreditation for the elementary schools, I would think that their testing scores are saying whether, and whether you're making AYP, adequate yearly part, yeah, okay. Sometimes it gets the letters mixed. You know, would say if you're doing a good job or not, would you really, for the elementary schools, need it?
Well, and I would say at the elementary school level, yes, because in this world of choice, if a parent is looking at similar test scores, but school A is accredited and school B isn't, they're going to school A. You know, and, and that's.
And it's an ongoing process.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's constantly being updated every year.
Something that happens every five years.
It's not static.
But we can absolutely, if it's okay with the maker of the motion and the second of the motion.
Funderberg and Beard.
We will rescind that motion. We will rescind that motion and just strike the motion and place it on the agenda for next Monday.
So would it be fair to say, anybody has questions, email to Paula?
Please.
And then get those answered by the next meeting?
Please.
And my question would be just the surrounding schools, do they pay for this, and do they, do they, do they use this firm? Who or how do they get their accreditation if they have it?
I'm trying to look it up on Advanced Ed's. I just found Bellevue is accredited by Advanced Ed. I can't get Huron to come up, so I don't know if they're on here or not.
We'll get that information for next week. Thank you. There is nothing under other. We're at the point in the agenda of communications and expressions from the public. I have two forms in front of me. If anybody wishes to address the Board, I need you to fill out one of the forms that's on the back table and pass it up to the front. You will be permitted to speak for up to three minutes. The first person wishing to speak is Ms. Stacy Page. If you could please use the microphone.
No, the top switch, probably Stacy. There you go.
I wrote what I wanted to say. Can you hear me? I wrote what I wanted to say on my phone, so I'm going to be reading from my phone. My name is Stacy Page, a Romulus resident of 32 years, taxpayer, city treasurer, and friend to many. I definitely understand the difficulty in balancing a budget, especially during these past few years. Today I am here because I care about my community and the people that live here. I am concerned that many may lose their jobs. Children will leave the district, homes will be foreclosed, tax dollars will be lost, and most of all, livelihoods. I know that you too are concerned about these very things. I believe that each and every one of our school board members will vote what they believe is the best decision for our students. I truly believe that all school board members want to make the right decision. However, I know that privatizing should be used only as a last resort. I wish there was a magic wand, but there's not. I would like to ask school board members to please open your hearts and listen to all the ideas, opinions, and comments. I ask that all other options be exhausted. If your decision is to privatize, then our residents need to know why. They were told that supporting a millage would keep our sports programs in the assumption that Local 64 would be transporting. I only ask this question because I believe that our residents and employees feel misled. As an elected official, I know what you're going through. We face tough decisions and challenges all the time. I know that we may make decisions that not everyone will agree with, and I can respect those decisions as long as they are backed up with facts, transparency, and value. At the very least, we owe our employees, residents, and students an explanation. Thank you for your time.
Second person wishing to speak is Dean Burcroft. Dean?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
First of all, I'm here in my father's stead, Leroy Burcroft. My mother broke her ankle a week and a half ago, and he could still be at the hospital right now. She's supposed to be in for surgery, but I guess they're going to postpone that. So he prepared a statement, the statement is from his point of view, and it goes as such. Dear Romulus school board members, I'm contacting you today in an effort to voice my concerns and my complete opposition as it relates to the potential privatization of essential services, as well as the elimination of several full-time jobs within the Romulus Community School District. Having struggled through tough budgetary times and decisions as a local official, I understand what you're faced with. However, privatizing services and eliminating jobs, many of whom are Romulus residents, should be your last and final option, after all other potential revenue savings and/or revenue-enhancing options have been exhausted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Was there anybody that wanted to speak that didn't fill a form out? Hearing none, we'll go to concerns and questions of Board members. Ms. Bowles?
None.
Thank you. Mrs. Kraut?
None.
Thank you. Mrs. Funderburke?
Yes, just that I won't be here Thursday, I wanted to know if we will be posting the meeting on YouTube.
This meeting or Thursday's meeting?
The Thursday meeting.
Yes, once it's.
Okay.
Ready to.
Thank you. No.
Not this time?
Ms. Thead?
Anyone out there, stop the rain, the audience?
No, I don't have anything. I'm with Danielle too, I'll need to see the things for Thursday. And I just also wanted to send a, to let one of our employees know that our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family, Mrs. McCollum.
Yeah, I was actually going to ask that the Board recognize a moment to send prayers, if you're prayerful, otherwise happy thoughts. Pat McCollum, a former.
No, she's retired, no.
Yeah, she retired, she's medically retired, was admitted to hospice. And the last word this morning was, things were not going well for her. So if we could please take a moment. Thank you, Mrs. Beard. I have nothing. The Chair, will it entertain a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Buckley, supported by Mr. Thead. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 7:57. I'm sorry, 6:57.